No, I don't know.
Not this one. Blue, blue.
Save that for the next one.
Save that for the next one, okay. Okay, who's up?
Oh, before we begin this process, Jones asked for a moment.
What?
Asked for a floor where he wants to address the board.
Oh.
Going to podium.
No, I just. I just got a few things I've been made aware of the last couple of days. I've been with Martin probably three, four hours. And one of the things is this capital improvement fund. That money is money that used to be tax levy money that is now capital improvement money. And we're at 1.6 million dollars. That money, that's all that's left in that fund. So, once you spend it, it's gone. And I just want to make you aware that it's people's money. Spend it, but spend it wisely. Because, once it's gone, there's no replenishment every year. We have an obligation to provide the citizens with police service, roads, good water, and sewer. Everything else is non-essential.
Fire.
Fire, yes. And there was an article in Tuesday's Herald about Congressman Jason Smith voting against Senate House Bill Number 47. And there's been a lot of stuff about why he voted against it. One was, it was 200 some odd pages long. But it says he supports the National, the St. Johnview National Historic Park, and he was honored to honor, to author and have it signed into law as designation last year. His spokesman, Joey Brown, wrote last week, "Congress considered an additional public lands package, which includes concerning language potentially resulting in unchecked federal land grabs." This bill took away one of the Congress key oversights in federal land acquisition, and as a result, referencing Smith could not support this bill as a whole. When they do take over this, in the previous week's paper, they will be buying two additional properties on St. Mary's Road. So, that's two more properties taken off the tax rolls. So, this job is going to get harder and not easier. And that's all I want to say.
What two properties are the, that you're talking about that are on the tax rolls?
Hook and Ross Garage is one, and the Lanzini House.
What was the other one?
Those two.
Those two.
Lanzini House?
Yeah, that's right across the street.
Zerrinelli.
Zerrinelli. Zerrinelli. Yeah. Okay, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay.
Yeah, well put. I think, you know, it's all valid concerns.
Okay, so, I asked that the first issue of the business tonight, the consideration of the municipal court that we've talked about. And, and the reason was because we had like this pending bid and we're going to have to award a contract. Well, as most of you have probably heard, the bids came in at 375,000 something, which was like way over anything we ever thought. And to Jimmy's point, that money would come out of that capital improvement fund, which is not self-replenishing. And, and that would be an investment in building the market value, which I don't really know, but, you know, you might be spending as much as it's worth to renovate it. So, you have, we have to decide whether to act on those bids. We can always negotiate with the low bidder, or we can reject all bids and start over again. That's not the issue for tonight, but, but it's the, kind of takes the sense of urgency out of making a decision because unless you're, unless you're ready to approve a $375,000 construction budget. And if you, if you want to consider that, it will be on your next agenda. I didn't put it on this agenda because there's no contract. There really isn't anything for you to approve. It was just a bid. And, 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 and I, and normally I would move to the contract phase to, you know, and, and, and we would, we'd go, but given the kind of amount above our kind of thought process, I was reluctant to do that. But, if we're, if we're going to consider asking the circuit court to take over the municipal court duties, we need to put them on notice. They have 90 days to respond. During that 90-day period, the circuit court is going under some, through some provisions in their record-keeping systems. So, they won't be, won't be ready to take us for at least for the 90 days. But we, we need to start the clock running. If we wait, then it just kind of pushes that 90-day period further, further down the road. They made it sound to us like when we had a meeting with the presiding judge, that, that this work would be completed within that period of time. And, and we could, we could proceed when, when they're ready. So, to facilitate your decision, you have one page copied on front and back. Sue, Lisa, to a lesser extent I, because I was kind of driving the bus, have, Sue put this, put this together to show what the fiscal impact of such a move would have. And, it's this one. Not, not, I got it. So, the judicial budget, you know, the first section shows the, the money that would be saved by not having to maintain a clerk's office and functions. And the money we would, we would receive in the court, in the fine revenue from the courts. The circuit court will keep the court costs. We will get the fines. So, between savings and that revenue, you know, that's, that's, that's the court figure. The things that we will continue to have to pay for are the two items that you see in the next block, which is the legal services, and that's Jeremy, who's here tonight, Jeremy Brower.
Joe, stand up. Jeremy's our prosecutor.
To, to answer any questions you have of him and, and court fees. The legal services, his, his pay is not $19,440. But, when we lose the clerk's position, we still have an obligation for data entry for the tickets that are issued in the software package that show me court's information. And somebody has to take responsibility for that and then scanning the tickets in. So, he's kind of come up with a budget number, how many hours and dollars per hour. We don't know. It could be more, it could be less, but we, we took, we took the best estimate and, and put it in there. We'll know more kind of as we progress, you know, what can the police do? And, you know, what can hit people do? And we'll work out some, some figure. But regardless, the total savings are an order of magnitude of $104,910. If, so the, the issue is, do you want to proceed? Are there any, any downside to it? That's the upside.
On the surface, it looks wonderful. And if our chief of police has any reservations about it, I certainly don't.
No, my, my understanding is there, you know, obviously, we have one employee that would be affected by this change.
Right.
And, and everybody is sympathetic to that and eager to make sure the city is still fiscally responsible and that this employee.
We're going to discuss that in close sessions.
Right.
Right. So, aside from that procedurally, I think that, that we have no choice but to look at this.
Joe, you follow this court a lot. Do you have any, your thoughts? And yeah, Joe, Joe has been involved in court since the beginning and comes to all of, all the court dates.
As a defendant.
Tom. He's not, you don't pay his tickets, but he does.
Three meetings in a row now. He's late. I'm getting ready, I'm getting ready to go out.
His opinion on this because he does, he's got a lot of knowledge with it and always has good questions about it, so. Oh, and, I mean, and speaking with Jeremy today and other times, are, are you comfortable with the number, have you seen this?
Yeah, Martin and I talked about it earlier today.
So, you're comfortable with that number and?
That number I came up after talking to clerks in St. Jen, in St. Francis County, and this point in Nassau County. But, it's kind of a, a guesstimate at this point how much services I'm going to have to do. And Chief Bennett and I talked a couple of times today about this. Some of the, from here on out, the tickets have to be entered, the tickets that police write have to be entered in manually. And so, if you envision a police ticket, every blank on that ticket has to be entered in. And somebody has to do it. Eric thinks there may be a program that'll make that transition easier. We're exploring that. And also, all police reports that are in the, like a paper copy like this, they have to be scanned in to the computer also because everything is shipped into paperless. There's a portal that we would use. It's called Show Me Courts, but it's through a state-funded or a state-run court system. So, we would go in, download the program, and be able to have a portal to update all this stuff. And that's the big question is, we're losing the clerk, who's a full-time employee, and that void has to be filled somehow. And we're trying to figure out the best way to fill a lot of those clerical roles.
Is there any additional cost associated with being, granted access to that portal? I mean, are we going to have to pay in order to utilize it to enter, you know what I mean?
No, it's, it's downloadable from the state website. It's called Missouri Casenet is the website that any court, any county court.
Right, but it's limited as to what a regular person can see.
Correct.
Would, would we have to buy into it to get full access to us?
I think through Chief Bennett and myself, we'd be able to enter all of our pedigree information, and we'd be given the clearance necessary to activate that portal.
And I don't think there's expense for that.
There is not expense to that.
So, the uncertainty, well, you can't guarantee a number. It isn't going to be $40,000. It's going to be, you know, it's going to be $19,000 plus, maybe minus, you know, a few hundred dollars either way.
I have a question for Eric.
Yes, sir.
It's part of your renovations, part of that was separating Lisa's office so we can go back and save, have some savings on that, right?
Yes, there, there would be some construction savings there, but it's not going to be.
Right.
Miniscule.
Yeah, but it's, we have to start somewhere.
Well, no, but, you know, before we could ever.
It's not going to bring it down to 200,000.
I realize that.
Right. Before we can ever talk about approving a contract and stuff, we need to do a work session with the plans, with what, you know, and sit down and make out a list, what do we have to have and what do we not have to have? And hard line it back out and probably negotiate a rebid and stuff. But this, this is not an uncommon thing where contracts come in.
Well, we, we either can negotiate with the low bidder, and he's willing to do that. We, you know, he understands. Or we have to reject all the bids and, and start over again. Those are our two options.
Was, was the architect given any direction as far as a ballpark of our budget? So that he knew what, I mean, are there any?
Yes, he knew what our, what our.
So, we're still?
Yeah.
It, yeah.
Although, I don't, I'm not convinced, and, and I don't, I don't think he'll deny this, that it's the most cost-effective budget, just in terms of, you know, he didn't, he did pretty expensive light fixtures and the floor coverings and, you know, and you can, you can adjust all those things.
Sure.
And if you are only like $50,000 above your goal, you know, maybe you could get there.
Right.
But you're not going to get from 375 to 200,000 dollars changing the carpet.
Martin, refresh our, back to what Jimmy talked about, as far as this capital improvement fund. That money came out of the Tiff District, correct?
No. It was originally the levy tax. Okay, but when the vote was taken to establish a capital improvement fund for the firehouse and the Roger Street improvements, and I don't know what else was in there.
The people voted for that.
People voted for that.
Yes.
The levy tax, and then the money that was raised through the certificates of participation that were issued became one. And we have a legal opinion that says, once that happened, once the voters voted for that, and I'm not saying it was made clear to everybody, but it did, that's the way the ballot language reads.
Right.
Then, there were no further restrictions on the use of those funds.
Other than for capital improvements?
Capital improvements, yes. It's a, there's a capital fund, we can't use it to fund operations.
And we're still paying into that? And when, does that tax expire?
No, that, that, there is no tax. We, they authorized the issuance of, of debt certificates of participation and, and so, the money that was raised by that was merged with the money that was already in the bank to create the capital fund. They built the firehouse, and we've been paying down the debt. But, you know, that cash is there.
But, but the money that's being used to pay the debt now, when we take over the water storage tank, that money will go to pay that down.
I have, without getting too far off on a tangent here, where do we stand with our bond rating? Because I seem to recall a discussion a year or so ago where.
We're on what's called a watch list.
Exactly.
And we still have an A-plus bond rating, but.
We're kind of by the horse's head there.
They kind of, you know, they've got a, I call it a tickler file. We're, we're flagged.
Right.
So, every year, they're going to look at our budget. And without us going to the market for more borrowing and make a decision about our bond rating relative to our reserves, that's the only question they have.
So, does that capital fund play into that?
That capital fund could be set up as a reserve account. It's not now, because you can spend it. You haven't, you haven't designated it as a reserve fund.
So, I.
And, and, you know, we did spend some of it.
But it's an interest-bearing account.
Yes, it gets about 6,000, at its current level, you know, $6,000 year interest.
So, I, you know, what, it goes without saying, we've got to really watch.
And that should go up with interest rates.
You know, I mean, that's like, that's an understatement, but.
If you, if you want, and, and we've talked about this reserve issue. I mean, we have reserves in water, and reserves in sewer. I mean, we have various reserve accounts. In the general fund, however, our reserve account is 600 and something. That's what they're looking at.
Now, when we did the fire.
And that's what should be doubled, probably.
When we did the fire truck, there was also talk about approaching some entities that use our services but don't pay any taxes to us to see if they would help us. Has that ever, has anybody started any of those talks?
Mayor Grimminger and I paid visits, but we didn't get any contributions.
Well, back on the judicial subject, this is something I think Mark said is, is going to, in all likelihood, become mandatory.
Sooner or later.
Sooner or later.
Yes.
And Pam just came back from the City Clerks Conference and reiterated that, that that was a point of discussion that the city clerks needed.
Let's say we go with it.
I don't see a downside to it, Mr. Green.
Sooner we get into it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, this doesn't really require a motion or anything.
No.
No.
I'll, I'll proceed by notifying the court, it's our desire to, to do that. And we'll get, we'll get the clock running. Okay. So, in anticipation of this meeting, I sent out, that'll be, this thing that's got Brent Burke at the top, City Minister of Defense.
Yes.
I said, "How do you guys do your budgets?" And Lisa, this is a sample of the responses that I got.
Yeah.
Brent's response was, there were 10 cities or so responding, I didn't keep a total of it, that said, "Yeah, we do it like he does." The vast majority of the cities do that, which is essentially what we do. The range runs from that to hiring a consultant to come in and prepare your budget for you. So, just take a moment to kind of look over these responses.
We used to have a finance slash budget committee, didn't we? Whatever happened to that?
It's been a long time ago.
I think that was made up of Alderman, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Kind of like Perry, it starts in January.
Well, you'd have to change your fiscal year.
Yeah.
One is, yeah.
One of them starts May 1st, Chesterfield.
What's Perryville's fiscal year? Does anybody know Perryville's fiscal year?
Do you, Martin?
No, I don't.
There's one in April. Does anybody use the zero-based budget?
I'm about to talk about it.
Okay.
And the answer is?
No.
Not at the, not at the municipal. It's used at federal level. So, Micah Rousey came in and talked about what sounded to me, he was describing zero-based budget. And, well, it's otherwise known as performance-based budgeting. Performance-based budgeting is like zero-based budgeting, except you establish kind of measurable for performance standards at the, at the end of the process. So, the question, I mean, if we had a health department, we would be talking about how many children we're going to immunize in the next year, you know, and say in the street department, you know, how many miles of pavement are we going to repave or? I'm not sure in police and fire how you would set these goals, but, but you can. I mean, you can, you could say, "Okay, well, we're going to, we have a goal of making sure that our police officers have this amount of training every year." Whatever your, whatever your, your performance standard is. But zero-based budgeting is pretty much what it implies. Is there's no, whatever happened last year, or the year before that, or the year before that, is irrelevant. That the department, first you have to set your goals. What is it you want to achieve for your city? Do you want, and what are your priorities? Do you want, is your priority infrastructure improvements? I mean, we know the citizens want, we've surveyed it, and we know the citizens want better streets, police and fire protection. They want more places to shop and more things for their kids to do. That's kind of their, their priority list from a survey. And it didn't surprise anybody. I mean, everybody kind of knew that was the, so, these need to be kind of broad-stated goals. And then the objectives become what the department heads bring to you. And they come in and they say, "Here's what I want to do." And every item that they bring to you is measured against the goals and objectives. And to the degree to which it supports them, it's given favorable consideration. And then, and they're put in list of, of priority. And you make your decisions, how much of that can we do and support our goals and objectives? And you also, and then, so after you've heard from all of them, then you say, "Okay, Fred wanted $100,000 to do this item. And Harry wanted, you know, $90,000 to do this item. And we really only, you know, so we're going to take $30 off of $30,000 from here, we're going to put it over there." And you decide among the competing demands for your resources, where you're going to put them. But, you, you, you do that using the goals as the measuring stick against which you compare the demands for, for the, for the resources. It's a, so now you say, "Okay, well, where are these goals going to come from? These goals and objectives." Well, generally speaking, citizens, they, they will hold public hearings or work sessions, invite the public to come in and express themselves about what they, citizens' most desire from the community. So, it's a process. It's a bit time-consuming because you have to have the time to do all those things. And, and just in terms of the, the management timeline. And it is time-consuming from the board because you have to attend all those sessions. But it's, it's not magic. You know, I, I, we can do it.
I think it's, aside from the time involved, I think it makes probably the most sense of any of them based on the situation we're in. You know, you, you can't keep doing the same things over and over and just going, "Well, this is what we did the year before, and the year before, and the year before," and getting harder in the hole. Something's got to change. Like it or not, something needs to change.
So, the other option is to assume you, you as the elected officials have a knowledge of what your constituents want. And that's why they elected you. And that we really don't need to have a series of public meetings in order to establish that.
That's correct.
But you still have to establish the criteria at some point. And that would be a work session such as this, where we discuss your vision for the community stated as, as fairly broad goals and then further defined by setting some objectives. Then you can ask the department heads to formulate their budget with the knowledge of those standards. Then they bring the information to you, and you judge the, again, the priorities based on competing demands for, for, for the whole dollar. Now, realize it's only applied to general revenue. We're talking about the thing, not, water and sewer is water and sewer. Band is band, cemetery is cemetery, parks are parks, except for the amount of general revenue that goes to support the parks. And one of the things we could do, and Sue and I were talking about this earlier today, right now, everything's in parks. Even mowing what arguably are not parks. I mean, it's the flood buyout property. Well, the money doesn't differ, and I haven't talked to Gary about this. It would be possible to figure out how much manpower and gas and equipment depreciation it goes to the flood buyout work. And then segregating that from park by putting that, that money in his regular budget. And kind of make it a little less confusing for people. But it will not get to the point where you aren't taking general revenue money to support the maintenance of the parks because there's not enough tax revenue to just cover the park maintenance.
And you know, Martin, me and you talked about this today. I find the budget very hard to understand. You don't because you work at the department. Sue is excellent at it, you are too. But.
No, she's.
That's like the park department. We transfer $43,000, I forget when it was. Shouldn't the budget show that we're starting out in a hole?
Well, it does, but you'd have to, we had to find it.
You've got it. It's like we talked about the past portion.
The park revenue is broken down from the park tax and the transfer from general revenue.
Right.
And, and so the transfer from general revenue is that figure you're looking for.
Yeah, it's, it's. Yeah, it's, it's there, you just...
So I prepared everything I could think of to prepare because I didn't, I really wasn't sure what you wanted to do. Some people said, well, let's just start. Let's just take the budget, go to the first category, and start going through the line items. But unless you have a way of, some goal in mind, how do you decide to remove that or keep that? I mean, you've got to have a standard against what you make, about what you make those decisions. Otherwise, it's no more, less arbitrary than what we're doing now.
Well, sometimes unpleasant decisions have to be made, but you've got to fulfill your legal obligations to provide by statute what we're supposed to provide for a city. We have to have a fully funded police department, we have to have fire protection, we have to have a street department that can do what it needs to do. To me, those are the three biggies, and after that, everything else is secondary. Those are essentials.
This is a little off the subject, but I can't keep my brain churning. We adopt a building code. We do inspections, we review plans. But I don't know that I can prove to you that because we did that, any, something good or bad happened, we assume that that is something we should do. But we don't have any way of evaluating its effectiveness. And unfortunately, like the mayor said, you really don't, won't know until you stop. If you stop doing building code review, building plan review, and building code, and then the fire department should arguably, over some period of time, you'll end up with more fires, or you end up with more deteriorated structures. But that's an assumption, we don't measure it, we don't monitor it. The same is true with every element of our work, you know. But should we challenge those assumptions? Is it just, do we just assume that these things are good?
Well, but as far as the building codes, we adopted the federal.
Yeah, you didn't have to adopt any building code. You don't have to have a building code. I don't know anybody who's going to argue against it because it's assumed to be a good thing. And building codes came into existence because the private sector wasn't providing structures that were uniformly safe for the people who occupied them. So we, nobody did it in an abstract, it was done as a response to a perceived public risk that was mitigated by adopting codes.
I'm listening, waiting for you to say something, Mayor.
Well, just like what Martin stated, you know, there's, and there's things you can cut, things you can't cut, you know what? And I hear it, I hear it from all, from everybody, where are we going to cut, where can we get money? You know, it's tourism. That's always a topic of conversation, was a top, topic of conversation for this board last year. Now we're looking for money for the police department. So there again, you can trim that budget, you can cut the budget, you know, and take money from there, but I don't know what's going to happen downtown, and I really don't want to take the chance with it because I've seen some pretty blighted and terrible places, you know, in my travels, so.
It wasn't blighted before it was $200,000 a year either. I'm just saying.
Yeah, I mean, once, when I came to town, that was staffed by volunteers. It wasn't a full-time paid position. I see no reason why that couldn't be turned into a non-for-profit organization. And look at what Short Effect Committee does. All volunteers, they get donations, it's a, it's a, it's a non-for-profit, and they do a wonderful job. I see no reason why something like that couldn't be turned into that.
I'd be interested in seeing what the downtown tourist districts' sales tax revenues have been compared to the glory days that these guys talk about before money was spent in that direction. Because I would wager, and I don't know this for sure, but my gut feeling is, you've seen an increase in sales tax revenues in the historic district once tourism started to get more attention.
Yeah, I still have to address the feasibility of coming up with that. I will tell you, however, we track a handful of businesses in the downtown area that we know are, their sales are sensitive to tourism business. And we compare the movement of the tax revenue from those businesses relative to the overall tax, because I had the same question, is spending this amount of money actually producing a result? And I can tell you, from having done that for the last four or five years, that the tourism-sensitive businesses' tax revenues increase more on a percentage basis than the overall tax increase would, is, sales tax increase is for any period of time. Likewise, on the downside, they come down slower than the overall tax revenues for any period of time. The problem is, and I look for a way to answer this question, I can't tell you how many dollars that is. I can, I can tell you what the movement is, but I can't, you know, equate it to a fixed dollar figure. So the question is, if you stop marketing the community, will that dynamic change? And as the mayor said, you don't know until you do it.
Well, give me, wait a minute, Randy.
Go ahead, Randy.
Sue, and I know we've kicked, forgive me, and we've kicked this around before, but for the sales tax revenue that's collected at 9.2, whatever it is, how much of that, again, does the city get out of that nine cents on a dollar?
Two and a half.
Two and a half, okay. So you're looking at, close to, what, $10 million gross retail sales to justify that? I mean, if we're, you know, I don't doubt that it does generate some revenue, but I'm saying, is it paying for itself? And I, I'm sorry, I don't see it.
And I just, and I guarantee you, it's not paying for itself, but, but, like any other service, and that's what it is, it's, it's a service, it's a service to the people, it's a service to every visitor that comes to this town, and that's where you got to look at. And that's the key to it right there, because we're looking at, we're trying to look at this to the benefit of the city residents, the fire, the police, and that, ours, we're providing an expensive service for those people. And that's the same thing. I don't know the exact number or figure of how many people, and that figure, we can keep track of it at the, at the welcome center, how many visitors come there, but there's a lot of visitors that come to this city that we provide service for. Information service, all kinds of service, that come visit here, and then we might send them out to wine country. So in that whole thing, you cannot look at the whole thing as, it's service-oriented business also. So, and to try to offset it and to do the, to do the math, we're not, it's not, but you got to, there again, and I, all I tell you guys is, is you're going to make a decision on that, then you better do due diligence and spend the time you need to spend down there, downtown in the district, seeing what's going on there. When it's, in the wintertime, yeah, it's a little bit slow, but busy season, go down there and walk around and visit with some people. I've done that, I've done my homework, I've spent a lot of time down there. I spend time with the police, I spend time at the firehouse, I'm going to see everything that's going on. So do diligence before any kind of decisions made there because it's important, it's important to this community, not only this city, but this whole community, the whole community.
Missouri is littered with towns that have dead, ugly downtown districts, and we are not one of them. And one of the reasons we're not one of them is because of that tourism stuff that we have coming in there, and the money we put forward into keeping that. I'm from Poplar Bluff. You guys ever seen downtown Poplar Bluff?
Yep.
It looks like there's been a war there. It's terrible. There's towns all over around us that have terrible, burned-out-looking downtowns that I'm glad we don't. And every dollar we spend that keeps that from happening here is a dollar well-spent, in my opinion.
I just don't know how you can draw a line with what goes on in the tourism department with that. People are going to come here, we've been here for a long time, we're very well-known. I'm not saying it doesn't draw some people in, I'm just saying I don't think you can put the whole thing as well because we've got that welcome center that that's why all this good stuff's happening. I'm not buying it.
We're competing against, we're competing against Kimswick, we're competing against Galena, Illinois, there's places like us, not that far away.
Well, what would be wrong with having that department self-fund, make it a nonprofit?
I don't think it's going to be able to fund itself efficiently enough to be effective by doing it as a, this isn't the day.
You're the only one who was on the board, I think, when the decision was made to convert from the voluntary part-time to the first step into city funding. Was this, did this discussion occur at that time?
I don't remember it being so controversial. I think it was just something that the board as a whole pretty much backed, you know.
This is not the day and age where you can rely on, you know, three or four retired nice ladies in town to advertise the entire town.
This is also not the day and age where you can have a police force working for less or barely above minimum wage.
I agree, but.
We're working on that though, Randy.
Yeah, a tax increase.
Now, we just talked about this, the savings on this, on this court, I mean, that's money, that's a, that's a, and I know even our tax increases is going to be, it's, it might not reach it, but now we have a fulfill, an option to make it, to make it in a good direction.
I agree.
And then my next question to all, everybody here is, how many, how much, and I know some of yous do, but how much time do we spend volunteering? I spend a lot of time volunteering at a lot of different things, and I'll tell you right now, volunteers are hard to come by. Everybody's struggling for volunteers, there's not, they're not lined up.
And you are to be commended for the things you do that
Yes.
a lot of people don't know about.
Well, and I do that because it's, because I care for the community.
I understand that.
I live here, I love this place, and it's, I'm like, God, I don't, I don't want to see it go to heck and a hand.
No, I don't either.
And I think it's just going to get better. I think, I think, I really believe, and I know you said something, we can not continue to lose money, and the way I look at it, I mean, we're not, where's the big loss of money? I mean, we've had some big expenditures, but there again, to provide good service, we spent a big chunk of money for our fire department, but that is very, it's money well-spent, and it's going to save people, guarantee it's going to save them, not a lot of money, but on their taxes, that ISO rating, it's going to, things are going to even out, there's things happening in this district that are, there's going to bring more people to town. And I'm telling you right now, with the national park, and I get that, I get those two properties coming off the tax burden, off the tax roll, but I guarantee you, you'll make more money when the visitors come to town to see it, when they go to CROs, or they go to one of the restaurants to eat, not even there, they might stop at McDonald's, the water park out there, that's going to bring people to town. Might not bring them to the downtown district, but they might come into McDonald's, well, that's sales tax, and it, or they spend their money all over the community. We're going to reap the benefits of bringing people to town, so. Yes, Jim?
The only thing I want to say is, we spend all of our money promoting this town, and who benefits the most? I mean, sure, but none of the businesses contribute to the welcome center. We spent, the state doesn't spend any money advertising, the federal doesn't spend any money.
The state goes as a grand.
I'm just saying, it's not enough to cover the cost.
Well, no, it's so, it's not, it's not a money, our police department's not a moneymaker.
I didn't say that.
I know, but you're.
We're required to have that.
Okay, I understand that, but there again, you're providing a service, and that's what we're doing, it's a service. It's a service to every visitor that comes to this town, yes.
Paul, why, you know, I'm not sure why we have to attack one department
Right.
you know, like that, and so what's wrong with the AHL thing of going to everybody and saying, everybody has to give up a little bit?
Because it's arbitrary.
What's arbitrary?
That, that decision. But what I just said when we opened this was, you need to, in order to do this the way most people do it, is you need to decide your priorities. And if you, and if you say, everybody cuts 20%, the only priority that you expressed is that I want to spend less money. And that's not really your goal. I mean, your goal is to allocate the resources that we have in the best way. Now, if we had a budget shortfall, if we didn't have enough money coming in to pay the bills, you'd have to tell everybody to cut. But, but at our current level of revenue with the budget that you have adopted, we're ahead of the game. So what's, so you're going to tell everybody to cut 20%, then what are you going to do with the money you don't spend?
Aving.
Well, then you, that's a legitimate response.
Right.
Then you should, then you should take 20% off of every budget but the street department, and transfer that money from everybody's budget to the infrastructure improvement line item of the street department. And you, and that's the goal that you've achieved.
And a fully funded police department.
Right. I just think we need to look at every department, we don't need to pick on any particular one.
No, that's why I said.
Well, that stands out though, because in nine years, every line item has more than doubled, and it's the only department that has that. That's why it stands out to me. You know, we, we have necessary things that we can't fund because we don't have the money, and, you know, like Randy said, I just find it hard to believe we're spending a quarter of a million dollars there, and we can't afford, on something that is, whether you believe it's needed or not, it's not required to have. And we can't meet the need, meet the needs of the stuff we are required to have.
Such as the police department?
And fire department. They've got another truck that's coming due before too long.
And you've got a street department that's got equipment that's what?
But yet, we're going to the voters and asking for more money. I mean, we owe it to the people to look at all this. I, I look at it from a businessman's perspective. I was a business for myself, I just closed my shop here at the end of last year to outside work, but for 40 years, if it doesn't show a return, you don't do it, or you're not going to be in business. I realize we're not in business to make money, but we are in business to survive and to provide services that we're legally required to provide for our citizens.
That's the only place in the budget where our expenditures do provide a return financially, is through tourism. Everything else we spend.
I would like somebody to show me that on paper.
Everything else we spend, no dollars come back from. We don't get money back from the police department, we don't get money back from the fire department, and these are all, I'm not knocking those departments.
Some that from the police, to, to say, right.
What's that? How much?
We can tell you, it's not much.
Well, we, we have.
But we don't have a way to quantify what.
$45,000.
$45,000.
And thanks to their police department, we live in a safe town. If you're not safe, none of the rest of it matters.
Right, and the police, we're safe right now at the current funding. Are you proposing that if we continue the path we're on right now?
Well, look at the revolving door personnel, and the reason they leave is because they're not getting paid that much.
And we've taken steps towards addressing that.
If it passes.
If it passes.
When it passes.
Well, I mean, we have to be prepared for if it doesn't. That's why we're having these talks.
I'm preparing for when it passes. That's why we're doing the judicial, and when it passes, it's, and I really think, I really think that the flavor of this town and the people want a good police department. And I got news for you, I don't care what you pay these guys, you know what, there's always going to be turnover.
Oh, sure.
Everywhere, because there's always a sweeter deal, but you know what, and you can't worry about all that, what we can do is go forward, we're going to, being positive about that, and you know what, we're going to know here in less than a month, but... But, and even if it doesn't, we're gonna, we're gonna make this happen. Just tell me. I got all the confidence in the world. We're gonna make it happen, and we're gonna have it, we're gonna continue to have a great police force. Because, I'll tell you what, I-
Well, whether, whether it, assuming even it does pass, you still need to be good stewards of the people's money.
And Randy, I am totally agree with that.
And, and-
I totally agree with that.
Maybe that is, to me, that is the top of the list of this board and the city, is to, to spend the people's money wisely.
I agree.
We had an alderman who once said, and I think to your point, the most important thing the Board of Aldermen does is adopt a budget. And I, I agree. That expresses the board's collective desires and goals for the city.
Right.
Well, I tell you what, I, there's nobody that's, that out more, that is out more and is more visible in this community than myself. And I'll tell you what, I have not had one citizen that expressed, not one citizen that has expressed that, that they're, they're not happy with, with anything, anything. I'm telling you, not with tourism, the police. I haven't had, nobody complain. Maybe you guys do in your, in your wards. I don't know. But I'll guarantee you, it's just a handful. I guarantee you.
Does sales tax, Randy, is 2%? I apologize.
Two percent, that's what I thought was said.
Yeah, it's one general fund, a half a cent for transportation, a half a cent per capita.
Okay, all right. So, that means, at, at two cents on a dollar, that in tourism money, you'd have to generate $10 million of grocery retail sales to pay for $200,000 a year.
We're not in the business of breaking even on every service we provide. That's not what we should be thinking.
What about the businesses that don't benefit from tourism, but they're taxpayers too?
Right.
And we're spending money to promote tourism-related businesses, but not spending a dime to promote theirs?
Such as?
Yeah, we don't promote theirs.
We don't promote individual businesses. We promote the town.
We don't promote any businesses.
There's no billboard that says-
You were just saying, it was based off, or you were worried about their income down there.
Well, that's my ward.
Well, okay.
Why wouldn't I be?
The tourist dollar gets spent, Joe, out there at Autozone. It gets spent out all over town. It gets spent at the wineries. It gets spent everywhere. It's not just downtown.
I'm elected to represent the interests of my ward.
And so are we.
And, and, and we're one or two bad decisions away from turning this into a boring, bland town, just like all these other places around us.
I disagree. I disagree too.
If we cut-
It wasn't a boring, bland town before we started spending-
Times, it's not the same thing, the world is not the same place it was 30 years ago.
Very true. But you don't know what the next 30 years are gonna bring.
But I won't be here to be no more.
Twenty years.
Me neither, me. Me neither.
Nobody at this table has to worry about that.
Yeah. But we also-
Maybe the girls.
You got one over there.
But in, in every decision we make, in the decisions we make, the decisions you make, Randy, you've made them good, healthy decisions for the future.
Exactly.
And, and you know, and that's my whole point. I'm not gonna be mayor forever, you know, and you're not all gonna be aldermen, but the decisions we make dictate and hopefully set up the future board members as we go forward. And, and we, and, and so much of this, and it drives me nuts in this town, we can't get over the past. We, we have so much conflict of stuff that happened on this board six years ago, four years ago, nobody can let go. We cannot go forward. It just drives me nuts. Let's bygones be bygones. Let's go forward. Let's look at this thing, the big picture. Let's look at it and make some good, healthy decisions for the future of this town that none of us, you know, for, for all of us, everybody sitting, most guys on this board, 20 years from now will be here.
I wanna say one last thing.
Go ahead, sir.
I vote for the city, not my ward.
Thank you very much. Because I hope you're all doing that, because that's the important thing, is for the whole the city, not just your ward. The people up on Academy and everybody else.
I think all of us, we all get calls from people out of our ward. Do I say, oh, no, I'm sorry, I can't help you? No, you called, you know.
So, we have seven minutes remaining this session.
I just wanna say one reason, one thing we gotta remember, the only reason we've got that, how many million-dollar levy out there, was because of our historic dip.
Well, sure.
You gotta remember that.
No, I don't think anybody's denying that.
Well, I know, then we need to continue to support that area.
To what extent, though, is what, I'm not saying-
Well, I understand that.
So, we need to decide on the next step. Direct me.
What is the next step?
Tell me what you want me to do.
Well, I'm, I'm not gonna be around for the next budget-making thing, but I, I think, I, I've heard people talk about, for the past two years, how they wanna gut that department, and I think it's the wrong move. I think that'll hurt the, that'll hurt, that'll hurt every ward, not just mine.
What do we wanna do to go forward? I'm, we gotta-
Do you want the next work session to be goal-setting?
Well, I mean, why not? We need to look at that. We need to look at everything that, I mean, not just that, insurance, there's all kinds of things we need to look at.
Well, I mean-
The discussion is-
Are we too early for that?
Before, so, I propose that we wait for the next work session to after the election.
That's a good idea.
Why don't we wait for the new blood to get in here, since we have to put up with them for two years anyway, and move forward?
Oh, boy.
You know, I mean that with love, right?
Because I love each and every one of them.
Why don't we wait till after the election?
I agree. Anybody?
Well, I wanna come, we're gonna have a work session. By good, somebody's gonna have to come up with, you, you guys wanna have a work session, I'm all for that, but you better be getting hold of Martin and letting him know what you want. Or me, or let me know what you want, because I'm not gonna sit here and try to pull tea and waste time. We're gonna, we need to go forward. If they're gonna be, they need to be productive, 'cause I-
Well, I mean, it- What's the harm in goal-setting?
Nothing.
You know decisions are made. Start talking priorities.
We talked a lot of priorities tonight.
We did.
Because as I said, I'm strongly, my strong opinion is that you shouldn't consider how to allocate the resources without knowing where you wanna go.
Right. Got to plan it.
And where you wanna be.
Well, I think it'd be a good idea then to wait till after the election, because-
Amen.
We're gonna have a vote, a big vote that's gonna be there.
Amen.
And we'll know what's-
Good luck. I got media.
Work session is closed.
Work session is closed.
Yeah, but I need laser. I've got some stuff on. Just saying.
How long ago did you have it done? Like, you'd like it? That right?
And there's no guarantee.
Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Hassler.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Newman.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Perez.
Here.
Alderman Rosica.
Here.
Mayor, we have a forum.
Very good. Have a chance to look at the amended agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Right now, we're gonna make a presentation. Is Mr. Virgil Warrior here?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You come on up.
Can we get our picture taken up here?
You can get everybody. Y'all wanna come up? Draw on. Come on.
Ladies.
Ladies.
My fault. I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm used to you kicking me.
I'll move over here.
Get those chairs out.
Joe, you need to be a little housekeeper.
Well, I can't. I'm...
Get out of the way. See, you need to be a volunteer. First of all, I want to welcome these five men and women, and I have a proclamation here. And this proclamation reads, please, whereas the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri has great admiration and the utmost gratitude for its military veteran population, and the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created as a badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782 and was the first American service award made available to the common soldier, and a Purple Heart is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with a declared enemy of the United States of America. And the mission of the Military Order of Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veteran members and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, make sure we never forget. And the city of St. Genevieve appreciates the sacrifices our Purple Heart recipients made in defending our freedom and believe it's important that we acknowledge them for their courage and show them the honor and support they have earned. Now therefore, I, Paul Hassler, Mayor of St. Genevieve, Missouri, do hereby proclaim the city of St. Genevieve as a Purple Heart City. And encourage the citizens of the city of St. Genevieve to show their appreciation for the service and sacrifice of the Purple Heart recipients. And I have heron to set my hand and cause by a fixed seal of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, to be affixed this fourteenth day of March 2019. Congratulations. Thank you, sir.
I want to thank the city and the county for letting us make the Purple Heart City. And that's for all the veterans. That's why I brought some auxiliary ladies here and some S.A.L. members, Purple Heart recipients. But they all had a part in helping the veterans for what they did, you know, not only us who served, but the ones that was in the background. If it wouldn't be for them, we could've done what we did. So, I appreciate it very much.
Anybody else have anything to share?
Giveers that lost for works?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. See you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Little goodness.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Everybody settled in now?
Yes.
Very good. We have a personal appearance by Jason Shot, and he'd like to address the mayor and the board concerning parking restrictions on parks. Welcome, Jason.
Thanks, Senator Ross. If you don't mind, I got a... So, I'm here on the Senate Hill Forty. I'm the president of the Senate Hill Forty Tax Agency, and we are the ones that just purchased the building down there on the corner that used to be Central Sase.
Within the year, hopefully this fall, we are going to be opening up a coffee shop down there that's going to employ special needs individuals to try to get more jobs for those individuals in the community. One thing that was brought to my attention, I didn't think about, but they brought it to me and I thought I'd address the city about it. If you look at the first photograph, you got the red truck and the one parking spot and the one just to the right of it. I would like to see if the city would entertain making that a fifteen-minute parking only for those two parking spots only for our coffee shop. And only during our business hours. Our business hours will be 6:00 a.m. till either 10:00 or 11:00 a.m. We haven't decided yet. The purpose for that is, is, you know, a coffee shop is kinda like a microtransaction business. You have people coming in very quickly, getting their product and leaving. It's not like a restaurant or a boutique or something like that where they're in there, you know, eating lunch half an hour, forty-five minutes, or even shopping, trying to enclose where they might be in there a little bit longer. Most of our foot traffic's gonna be in the door and out the door and not a lot of people sticking around. And since downtown area, especially on court days and when there's funerals, it's tight in parking most time, all the time, we were wanting to see if the city would entertain allotting those two parking spots there only for the fifteen-minute temporary parking for us. You know, most places have a drive-through that helps out with that. We won't have a drive-through. And we really want the people to actually come into our business instead of actually having a drive-through anyways because that's the whole purpose and the atmosphere of a coffee shop in the downtown area. So... Yes, sir.
When is the...gonna be opened up?
Our timeframe right now, we're looking at the end of July, first part of August. It's a pretty aggressive timeframe, but we don't have a lot of construction to get done on the inside. We've just gotta move a wall to make the bathroom ADA compliant. But once we get the construction done, it's just installing everything, employing the people and open it up. And we like to be open by that timeframe because we're gonna be partnering with the Senjin School District with their transitional program where it's gonna give job training for students that are getting ready to graduate that are in the Special Education Department.
We used to be on the first floor, Jason?
We have the whole building. The coffee shop though will be on the first floor.
So first of all, I want to thank you for your endeavors. I think this is phenomenal. As a high school teacher, I am excited for what you can do for our kids and our community. In addition to the two parking lots that you're looking for, the perfect parking spots, are you gonna need or require any handicap parking at all?
Well, we entertain that idea about seeing a battle handicap parking spot, but I think this would maybe help that too. If we make a handicap only, then you're limited only to the handicapped individual. This would help us maybe give parking spots to more general public and the handicap as well. If one of the openings there, then somebody's, you know, got a handicap placard can pull in there and you're right there next to the door as well.
So my only question is then that, you know, with this establishment, you don't see a need for...'cause I don't know. Are there any handicap parking spots at all in that area?
I don't think there's any handicap parking.
Do you foresee a need for one or two in that area?
Not at this point. I think if we can get the two designated for fifteen-minute parking only for people running and out, I think you're gonna have enough space in between people coming in and out that there'd be enough parking there.
All right. Thank you, sir. That's all I wanted to know.
Is there space on Merchant? Parking space in front of that island there?
That's what I was gonna ask. Can we make that area right there?
Didn't you like right?
Where's that?
Here, where it's on the side.
That's what I was thinking.
That's what I'm talking about, right?
And I looked there. I don't know if it's a long enough space through there for a vehicle to park.
The parking spot for that vehicle is further down off the side of the building, the first parking spot.
I think you're talking about on the second page.
Second page, right in front of the tree.
Yeah, on the second page. I showed it in side profile of the...
Where the yellow is.
But I don't know if it's a long enough space through there. Right now, it's all marked yellow for no parking. I just don't know if it's long enough.
They can put blue.
The previous... The previous tenant that was in that spot, she would park there all the time.
Yeah, I was thinking that.
Taking all her stuff in and out.
Gotcha.
I mean, for a fifteen-minute parking zone, I think that'd be great. Well, it's yellow line now, but it used to be a parking spot.
You know, even if we...
The problem that it's out there, if you put some on the road, that's not...
In front of those trees.
No more than...no, not in front of it. Oh, yeah.
Alongside those trees, it gets out there.
Alongside...
The other side of the trees.
In front.
Right at the corner where it cuts in.
Yeah, between the trees and the corner.
Right.
It's hard to see.
Right.
Are you on the second page?
On the second page. I don't...I can't actually go down.
So if that would be wide enough, maybe one on Third Street and one on Merchant Street would be fine. We'd like to have two. Just have enough space. And the third page is just a mock-up of what I was thinking. I mean, it's nothing fancy. I'm just, just an idea of what it would look like.
I mean, the only problem I got with the first page for those two spots, it's hard to get in and out of it.
It is. It is.
Look at this one here. You can just get in, go in, get your car, become that guy.
Yeah, but you can't park.
It is.
You're parking on the left side.
I think what you're hearing is resounding yes. We're just trying to figure out the logistics of it.
Sure. And like I said, we'd like to...
What I'm doing with the logistics is I have to write a...
Right. We'd like to have two spots if it's possible.
And would you direct me to write the order?
I recommend that we suggest the city administrators write the recommendation.
Want to do it on a trial basis or just...
What?
Want to do it on a trial basis or just do it?
Well, if it's a problem, we can...
It's a good point, but I think we should go.
The city attorney has pointed out that we can't use the coffee pickup language because it's a parking city.
Sure. Like I said, it was just a...
We can just say fifteen minute, right? We can just do...
We got two R's.
Yes, in front of the old brick is one hour parking.
Is it?
That wouldn't be any different from the penalty for the other parking. You're not hiding.
We have one hour parking in front of the old brick. Yes. In front of your office is one hour.
Why are you turning red?
Look at that. Look at that.
All right, we'll check on that.
Sign it's a board statement that the poll witnesses.
You can keep it. We're not doing it.
Thank you.
Good luck.
A's wants a corner. This corner, one where the truck is, and then these two. Yeah. Or on that corner up there and then one spot. We'll figure all that out later. We'll just check that out.
All right. Takes us to the city administrator's report. You're up, Mr. Martin.
Thank you. All right, so I mentioned to you at our last meeting that the board, the park board had wanted to get naps of the features of the park made. They agreed to use some of the money that you budgeted for them for Simo Regional Planning to prepare that. Simo Regional Planning visited with us and they are on the job. So that is progressing. The Levy District at their last meeting Monday night approved that memorandum of understanding with U.S. Fish and Wildlife, which you approved earlier. We delivered it to Sandra, who will deliver it to U.S. Fish and Wildlife contact. And they have already acted on that by coming in the habitat planted area where we were, identified the trees that need to stay and have brush hogged and cleaned up that site.
It looks great. I was wondering, I was gonna ask you that. That was fast.
Yeah, it was fast. And they will continue to do that.
Well, that's nice 'cause Gary used to have to do that and it's kinda tough.
Well, it...yeah.
Down at the...
Not that Gary's crew isn't perfectly capable of doing this, but it's in good hands.
That's right. So it's one less thing they have to do. It's down near the burn site in the Levy and the flood plain down there, so...
Come behind. You gotta pass the burn site. AT&amp;T is progressing and they have...Mark had reviewed their proposed lease. We have communicated back and forth and I think we will talk in closed session about the elements of that lease that are now kind of on the table and need to get resolved so we can finalize it. As you know, we opened the bids for the city hall renovations. Three hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars is the figure. Three, seven, six, seven, seven, five. I use this opportunity to discuss the specifics and ask Steve Bacon to be here. You want to come forward, Steve, to answer any questions you have about this outcome and what the possibilities are going forward. So, you have any questions for Steve? What are the possibilities going forward, Steve?
Well, in the general commercial market, there are a lot of ways to proceed. As a municipality or government entity, I don't know if you have any restrictions on what you could do as a next step.
We'd negotiate with the lowest bidder or reject all bids.
Those are two of the options, correct. Yeah. And we could...those are very commonly done. Nothing out of the ordinary about...
You remember our conversation when we started this, the kind of our order of magnitude expectation? We obviously exceeded that.
Yes.
About a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Correct.
In your opinion, is there any way to get this number closer to where we thought we were going to be that would...in any way possible?
Well, there are ways to get closer.
I mean...
It depends. Yeah, it depends what close enough is. One of the things that I have seen from the low bidder, they prepared a...it's a very, it's a very quick version of some value engineering ideas. They talked with several of their subs and talked about a couple of different things to reduce either the, just the cost of the job or to...does it make sense to reduce the overall scope and just reduce how much work is going to be done? So there were a couple of things that they looked at. One, and I've got something that I could share later or however you'd like to, but through a combination of possibly allowing the city to do the demolition work and taking that out of the general contract, that would save some dollars. Possibly going to some alternate light fixtures would save some dollars. There were some other possibilities for using different products that saved a little bit of money, but to save anything that really makes much of a difference, you sorta have to take a chunk of the project off. And it makes pretty good sense for the contractors to be able to divide the police station work from the city hall work. There's a clean line between them and it's two different sort of levels of work where the police department's very comprehensive, city hall is much simpler. So, one of the things that the contractor did was try to separate the costs for those two parts. But there hasn't been a lot of time since then and so these are still estimated figures. And one of the things that complicates that is the council chambers here itself is part of the city hall work. That could be separated further from the city hall. You could look at city hall and the council chambers as two separate things, but there are little bits and pieces of those two jobs that overlap and are a little harder to separate from each other. So, those would be the strategies for reducing the overall cost. As far as a strategy to do the same amount of work for closer to what the budget was hoped to be early on is I don't really see anything viable.
Is there a, is there a praise value in this building?
I'm not aware of one, but that doesn't mean it's not out there. I haven't asked for it, so I don't know.
Are there market value for this building? I don't...I know the building is pretty old.
I've never seen one.
Well, I mean, there would actually probably be a market value that the assessor has established because they do that weather and then they just zero us out because they just looked at it. I never look at it because I pay taxes.
My biggest question is, is you don't wanna put paint on a pig. I'm just saying, the building is very old.
Sure.
I understand. I asked some questions. It became city hall in 1977 and before that, I understand, it was a gas company and...
In a bowling alley.
Bowling alley, yes. Yeah. And in the 50s, I guess this building is pretty old.
Was that a police joke, Mayor?
As far as the building, the building itself, the structure and the envelope is solid and virtually none of the work that we're thinking about doing is because we have to repair or beef up any part of that.
So you're saying it'd be a good investment?
He's an architect.
You'd have to, yes. You'd have to compare what it would cost to rebuild it new versus what, A, you could sell this for or what you could sell that for once it's constructed.
Those are all things that we...there again.
And can you sell it without it being brought up to at least a minimum code? You know, there's still gonna be costs incurred in even trying to sell it.
I understand. See, there's water on the side of the building. There's water coming out of the basement and I'm sure...and then those issues we have in the ceiling that need to be taken care of, so...
And those aren't major cost items.
Yeah, but it's probably something we need to...
But you're right. We now have knowledge that we didn't have before about the condition of this building. We would have to disclose if we...
That's a good thing. It's always good to know upfront what you have. And then you can make a good decision on which way we want to go.
Sure.
And there's a lot of, there's a lot of options out there to do, to make, you know, and a lot of decisions to make, so...
Just to further answer the original question, as architects, we have been involved in negotiations with the low bidder to try and find some common ground between an over-budget project and where the owner would like to be. So if that is something that you'd like to pursue, then we are able to do that and would offer our...
I don't want to pursue the impossible.
Well, if it's, if it's, if you don't want to consider not doing the whole building right now, then, then, yes, then I think it probably is close to that.
I was gonna ask if you could do partial. Can we do the police department and then maybe just give a facelift to some of the other things and talk about the rest? I mean, we're moving the courts anyway.
The only thing that I would want to insist on is creating vestibule for security reasons.
I agree with that.
Other than that, we could just put new carpet and paint. Now, the problem we have is when you do the police department, there's this HVAC balance issue that's all out of whack.
Right.
And I don't know how that would work if you just did the police department. But I guess you could...
Well...
You were treating them independently anyway, weren't you?
Yes, yes. I think they are for the most part now and they would have certainly been separated after the project was completed, right. You know, one of the things that drew in costs that we hadn't anticipated upfront is, once you do substantial remodeling to a building, an engineer or the architect is obligated to go back and see where that space is relative to the current codes and see what, you know, how far you really need to go to bring it...does it need to be brought into compliance entirely, partially, or whatever? So, you know, things like, in particular, the council chambers, if this were to be left alone, the air conditioning issue that did add some costs would, could be left out of the job entirely, I think. The way we're supposed to look at it, this is an independent space. If we're just redecorating it, then no one's really obligated to go back and re-figure, you know, the capability of the heating and cooling equipment and how that matches up with the current requirements of the building code.
Well, this is all on its own separate system anyway.
It is. It is now. Part of the job was to enlarge it, which would increase the occupant load, which made us have to recalculate and not only recalculate how much additional air was there, but also make up for the fact that this may not meet the current code as it is right now.
So, shall we proceed with looking at the cost of doing the most important part of this project, the police department and the vestibule?
Were we planning on going in a closed session tonight to discuss the real estate?
Yes. Yes, we are.
I think we need to talk about that first.
Okay. Anything, any other questions for Steve? He's got important things to do tonight.
Thank you, sir.
You're doing a good job, Steve.
Thanks for thinking so. Oh, thank you. Thank you all very much. I've enjoyed working with you and hope we can get it where it needs to be.
Okay, going on. This has been kind of an informal group that's been meeting to advise Dave on rental housing issues, and I'm gonna let Dave cover that, but we had a really good meeting, I thought, and Dave's gonna cover that in his report. We've done the Purple Heart City. I've been in contact with the people from MODOT and the people from the Purple Heart Organization, and I have instructions. And the MODOT only wants to deal with the city as far as it goes with asking permission to put up a sign on the highway right of way within city limits. So, I will handle that process and Virgil's gonna get with me and we're gonna identify where it is and we'll take care of that. He's already got the signs. The Purple Heart said, you know, we'll send you as many signs as you want for a hundred dollars a sign. And Virgil's like, yeah, I already talked to him and asked him if I could make my own signs. So, he did and saved a lot of money. Now, the problem I have with that is signage on the highway right of way, they have specific standards for signs and I'm gonna have to determine whether Virgil's signs meet the MODOT standard before we put them out on the highway. And Gary's already offered his services, as we discussed at our last meeting, to install those signs. You recall our conversations with Citizens Electric? Dave's been working with them. They informed us that while they're gonna do this notification program on rental properties, they have to do some software analysis or changes in their software and it's gonna take a couple of months. So this might not happen until late May or June. If any of you have driven down Progress Parkway, more progress has been made. They were even up there today for a cost. Holy cow. But that containment structure skeleton is taking shape. You gotta see what's gonna happen there. There has been some progress again on Chadwell Lane. The engineer has responded to all of the Spire request and has sent the plans to them, and we're just waiting now for Spire to take the next step. This is an interesting subject that requires some consideration and direction from you. You're familiar with a rural fire tag program? And people who do not live inside the city pay the fifty dollars for a rural fire tag. But there's a provision that if you're within reach of the municipal water system of the city of St. Genevieve, you pay a hundred dollars. And the idea behind that is that we're maintaining a water system and a fire, you know, fighting with hydrants and whatever. And people who are in proximity to that will receive the benefit of that should they ever have a fire. So, they're getting a higher level of service. So you pay more. The problem I have with this, and it came up today, is this within reach of is not defined. How far is that?
Right over there.
So, for years, the city has been saying if you're within four hundred feet, I think, five hundred feet of a hydrant, you had to pay, but that's not codified. That's not feet of a hydrant, you had to pay, but that's not codified, that's not in the ordinance. So, I called Kenny, and he's giving his report tonight, we can talk to him about it more. We've got to come up with a number, otherwise I'm not sure I can continue to justify charging somebody based on some ill-defined measurements.
How many fire tags do we have like that?
Oh gee, I don't know.
I think, when I counted, it was like 200 and something.
No, not total, things will be approximated.
No, I'm talking about within the...
Yeah, I don't know, but it's a fraction of that, it's just few.
Maybe 10?
I honestly don't know the true number on it. When Martin called me the other day, I thought it actually was in the ordinance before about how far. It would be my opinion that we would consider 1,500 feet, that's the amount of hose I have on one truck, so I could lay from that fire hydrant and stop there and be able to reach. I carry more hose, but then I have to put a truck in line to relay and everything, so I would say a reasonable number, for me, from my point of view, would be 1,500 feet.
For a hydrant?
Yes, a hydrant.
Because this, within reach of municipal water system implies that you have a hydrant, but it doesn't say that. Okay, so with your direction, we will prepare an amendment to the ordinance reflecting 1,500 feet from a municipal fire hydrant.
It is, now.
Yes. It's 50, it's 100 if you're close, it's 50 if you're far away.
Yeah, that's it.
Is one other item that I, I intended to talk about this item during the budget hearing, and we can delay conversation about it, I'm going to ask Mark if we ought to put it off. You're familiar with the study that the Corps of Engineers have been doing for the last several years on the levy and recreation and all that, because they finally delivered 84 pages to me, and I have reviewed it. And the decision on, for this, kind of requires dedicating some of that capital improvement money we just got through talking about, in reserve to match future work, and we can have that conversation now, it's a little convoluted, and maybe we all just save it for an agenda item at the next meeting.
I agree.
I would recommend, that sounds like a specific agenda item, unless there's some emergency happens.
No, there's, look, they've taken four years to produce this.
How many pages are you going to cut it down to?
Across, three, two, oh, good. I'm going to give this, I'll just pass, I'll put it in your packets, and then next week, and you can take a look at it. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Takes us to our staff reports, Kenny, you're up first.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I have my report, probably the biggest news...
Yeah, I'm sure everybody's aware, we have received our ladder truck. We started our training on it last Saturday, we actually had the company refs come down and do a day-long training with us, and we will be training on it again Monday, and I plan to do one more training in April, and then hopefully by the end of April, we'll be up to snuff where we can actually put it in service. I did bring it down, I didn't know you guys had a work session ahead of time, but it's sitting outside across the street. So, you guys are more than welcome to come down to the firehouse any Wednesday night, we're there every Wednesday night, or give me a call anytime, and I'll take you, show you around.
Since here, you got to take it back to the D work room, will that be?
It's going to be working around the schedule for training, the training's going to be the priority. It needs to go back up there, like a preventive maintenance thing, so they get to know the truck too, and get the records and everything set for any repairs that come in the future. I would say we're going to train on next week, I'd say it's probably going towards the end of March, it'll go up for a few days. And it's only going to Arnold, to the local rep, so it's not going all the way back up to Minnesota.
That's a relief.
Yeah, that was a long drive.
I mean, you still got to get it lettered and stuff, right?
We've got the decals on it now.
Oh, okay, oh, you do?
Yeah, and we've got some of the equipment mounted. We do have a checklist of things that need to be adjusted and corrected, things that happens when you buy something specific, but that's part of what it'll do, kind of the dealership, is they're going to go back through and fix some of the things that haven't been done, and some of it can be done here in-house.
The radio that's on the agenda for second reading tonight, is that, I don't remember, is that something you guys are going to install?
No, that'll be installed by Wireless USA, is the bid, the low bidder on that. Basically, like I said before, what that is, is the intercom system, so each seating position will be able to talk to each other, and there'll be a couple that can talk on the radio, and also it's hearing protection, so...
You're getting bids for the other trucks you said, or not?
I'm going to hopefully get to that eventually, right now, my main priority is getting this truck, yeah. We've got two trucks that have a single headset, the theory was, you can take it out of the driver's seat and use it around the truck, but it's only one seat, because we used to take a truck with one guy, now we're trying to get multiple guys in a truck. So, we have a couple of we can adjust to make work, after we find out how well this works.
Chief, I just want to make sure I was clear on what you said about as far as the verbiage with back to the fire tags, because of our hoses, you're thinking, you're talking about 1,500 feet, is that what you said?
Yeah, we carry 1,500 feet on both of our first-out attack pumpers.
Okay.
So, we carry 2,000 gallons of water on the trucks, and then 1,500 foot, so we can lay out 1,500 foot of hose from the hydrant, and set up and fight fire with it.
Thanks, chief.
Yeah, tell them what we got.
Pardon me?
It's a four-inch.
Yeah, it's four-inch. They call it LDH, large diameter hose, it's like putting a small water main on top of the street, so the hose we lay down the street is about so big around.
Excellent.
It's like an extension of the city water system.
Thanks, chief.
Kenny, I don't know if anybody has recognized you guys for all the work you put into for picking out this thing, all the research, the time you guys gave up going up and getting the truck, I know there's several guys went up there without pay, took off work. I don't know, I think that was a pretty special deal. Compliment all the other guys that did that, because that was...
We've got a great group of guys, and they do it because they love what they do, and that's a testament to the way we work with the city, too. If they didn't care, they wouldn't be there, so.
I think you guys got a lot of stuff like on Channel 12, too, didn't you?
Yeah, that was a surprise to me. I got a phone call one day saying, hey, I need to talk to you about that, where'd you hear from it? And he saw the picture in the Herald, and they decided, came up and got a little interview with me, and asked me a few questions about it, and it got broadcasted on numerous radio stations and a couple TV stations.
I saw it that morning. And that Knox box, refresh my memory, what, do we charge for that, or how much are...
The Knox box is just a metal vault that they purchase and put on the outside of the building. Yeah, they purchase it, and once they have it installed, they contact us, and then we have the only key to get into it, so they put their keys inside, we lock it up, and then we secure the key, so that's the only way that anybody can get in, is using our key.
Yeah. Are there any major structures out there that have not installed it yet, that you would like to see?
I could do some research on it, I'd like to see it on every commercial building, but that's not feasible at this point.
Are there any major ones that you're like, they really need to have one?
I would have liked to see one on PIVA, I've mentioned that a few times, because that being a city-owned building especially.
I thought we approved to put one out there.
To the best of my knowledge, it's never been ordered on it. Whenever somebody puts in a request for...
I think we should, I mean, we'd have to provide it.
I thought we already said to go ahead and do that.
I don't remember doing it.
I'm pretty sure we did.
We have it on the interpretive center and the public works buildings, and city hall, but I don't know of one on PIVA, I've never been called.
Maybe if you think of other commercials, you come back next, unless no...
Sure, I can do that.
Is that something you order, Kenny?
No, that's the property owner, or the...
But we're the property owner.
Where are the owners?
For PIVA, yes.
Who ordered one for city hall?
We could do it, I helped Sandra get one for interpretive center, it's basically an online thing, you click on it and put a credit card number in, and...
Why don't you do that?
Okay.
The city hall, we want to.
So, we got one?
We've got one here, there's one by the steps going to the basement.
So, these are all actually the same?
Yeah, they're all a metal vault with the key, and the key is set up just for the fire department, I'm the only one that has access to the authorization and everything on that.
Chief, as a small business owner, I'm just curious as to whether we may want to consider, if we haven't done so already, I haven't heard it, letting people know that we can do this for their commercial property.
I think David...
Because this is what I would do.
Yeah, I think David has been talking to some people about it, I got a call the other day from, I can never say the name, Lubere or whatever, and they're getting one put in. I recommend it for everybody, because what it does is, if we get alarm sounding there, we can get into the building, check it out, make sure everything's good, and lock it back up. Otherwise, we have to stand outside, take a guess whether or not it's burning, or break a window to get in.
So, maybe if we're fortunate enough, our newspaper might carry that and let people know they can do that?
I think they could probably do that.
And for new construction, we certainly...
Yes, we can also put it on our Facebook page, we've got a pretty active Facebook page with the fire department, so we'll post something on there, too.
Great.
Any other questions? Thanks, Kenny.
Okay.
You guys stay around, aren't you?
Yeah.
Gary Rock? Just a pothole, please.
The PP?
And that's coming up on you again.
Chief Rock, go ahead.
You guys all have my report, we're finally outside doing things again.
I was at Mowers.
We're all ready to go. Any questions on, anything on that?
You got a full crew, Gary?
Yep.
I'd like to comment on that, we work with Merit's good bill, or not good bill anymore, but Merit work steps or...
I'm not even sure what the actual name is.
Whatever it is, they asked us to take on the people that they're trying to educate on proper work etiquette and whatever, and so every year, we accepted somebody for the last three years, I guess. And this most recent person came on, and Gary said, can I hire her? He said, she works harder than anybody I've ever had, so we hired her, and so I think it's a testament, not only to Gary and the crew, but to kind of to the value of the program, because here's a hard-working woman who just needed a chance to get in somewhere, and it's worked out for everybody.
It's a real good program, they, even once she's not, or you know, she's hired through me or us, she still gets incentives and stuff through that program. Once she receives her CDO, she'll get an incentive from them, she got one for being hard full-time, you know, so it's an ongoing thing.
And her name is?
Stacy Snyder.
That's the director.
That's the director, Kaylee Valroy is the guy I hired. Saturday or Sunday this week, we will be closing floodgates. We're not ready for that, but...
If you haven't heard, there's a lot of water headed down.
It's coming, yeah.
Yeah. The crest is predicted now, it's like 36,2 by Tuesday. Touching on something Martin had a while ago, SEMO planning is going to be up, I'm going to meet with them Wednesday and go around and start doing GPS on all the park. Just food for thought, we started handicap parking downtown, there's only one handicap parking spot downtown, and that's in front of the post office, just for some food for thought. Then the next thing is, I'm having issues with a piece of equipment in my backhoe, it's 13 years old, and it has $6,000 on it. We've had two instances in the last month, and the situation, especially if it would have been Alliance using it, setting a pump in place or something, there probably would have been somebody killed. Blew a line and blew a cylinder in both instances, it shot the hole out, you know, if they'd had a pump hanging on it, it would have been bad. Very costly to replace.
Well, that was what I was talking about earlier, with the age of our equipment, you know?
But, you know, especially with the flooding coming, you know, chances coming up, it's a very used piece of equipment for that, we use it on a daily basis, Steve uses it a lot, you know, and a lot of his is hanging stuff off the back.
Are we talking new, lease?
I was just thinking the same thing.
Probably, I mean, I haven't checked into a lease thing yet, I've got some preliminary prices on new, and they run about 90,000 to 95,000, and that's a big government discount.
We could do a lease purchase, the way we do lease cars.
Right.
So, we don't have to come up...
And it would be about $20,000 a year payment, which I have a line item in for equipment that, a remainder part of that's like 16,000 a year, so it'd be an additional, you know, 4,000, that's with nothing else in there. So, if I could have direction to just start looking in?
I'll tell you right now, what you said is a safety issue.
It's definitely...
It's a no-brainer, it means we got...
Steve will attest to that.
Sorry, but that's, you can't, that's something you don't mess with.
Yeah, if we have any kind of job where they then have to be working around the moving boom, we can't use that machine.
Okay, well, then it's, that's a safety issue.
So, it's going to be down to renting or hiring it out?
And I tell you, I strongly suggest that you make this public right now, that you rent one until you get your safety issue dealt with, because if somebody gets hurt, then you'll be paying, the city will be paying a whole lot more for the piece of equipment, so...
And you still use the loading to lower it.
Yeah, you still use the front end, all the issues are on the back part.
Well, I'd take that off and use the loader, I just would, that's, that's something you need to do, because you've identified that you have an unsafe piece of equipment, so take it off and no use it. You have to, you have to rent one, that's...
Yeah, so proceed with prices and looking at...
Do we have to get bids?
We have to put out for bid, so we'll have to prepare our set of specifications, advertise for bid, receive the proposals, and then let you know what the outcome is, and then, when we know that, we can talk to first aid, or sometimes the seller actually has a lease purchase program, see what the best deal is on financing.
Does, when Alliance uses our equipment like that, do they, do they ever pay for any of the use of that equipment?
No, it's...
Or just nice and lend it to?
We use more of Alliance's equipment than any...
Don't we pay them? Don't we pay Alliance?
It's in the agreement that we provide the equipment.
Yes, I'm going to talk to Steve about maybe allocating some of the cost.
He's paying 93,000.
We'll work that out.
Let's get her down.
Would they have some good used ones that are coming off of leases, or not?
I've talked to two of them already, Case and to New Holland, and they, there's very few of every good used ones.
Used though. Oh, you told me before we got in here, there's going to be a street close for a while?
Yeah, probably Monday for a while, Walnut Street at the corner of Park, we got a little collapse under the road with a storm drain, so it'd be, at least one lane would be closed on Monday.
Park, Park or Walnut?
Walnut. It depends what's in there when we get in there.
After eight, sorry.
If not, there'll at least be one lane.
Anything else?
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Gary, David?
Just to put a plug in for Workforce Development Board, that Stacy Snyder's the director, she's always looking for more businesses, and they cover the training, they cover the equipment, they'll cover gas if that person needs that training, so, always looking for more businesses over here at the Workforce Development Board. On Knox boxes, new construction, it's required, on change of use, we've tried to get those folks to come along, too, and anytime I'm out doing inspection, we hand it over, that's how labor exchange came in, so, we're trying to push them. You got my report there, Heritage Commission, not a whole lot going on there, Building Department, Code Enforcement, there's the numbers, but if you go down to almost the last bullet point, occupancy inspection update, I gave you a sample of what a certificate of occupancy looks like. If you remember back, I don't know, three months ago, we had to go into a facility and have the occupant vacate it, because it was uninhabitable, and we talked that night about some of these issues that we're having with some derelict buildings, uninhabitable buildings, and so on. So, I got, gathered a couple landlords, a couple tenants to have a few discussions, and out of that came that we actually have an occupancy load in ordinance. In ordinance, we adopt the International Property Maintenance Code, we adopt a lot of codes, but that's one, and in there, there's a formula for calculating the occupancy of a residence. Commercial structures are calculated typically by the architect, the engineer, and so on. So, what we decided to do was use that, it uses the size of the bedroom, bedroom or bedrooms, to come up with a number of occupants, and then it calculates the number, the size of the, or the dimensions of the living room or, and dining room, and that can then limit that number. So, if you come up with, a structure will hold eight according to the bedrooms, but the living room and dining room could only contain seven, then the occupancy load would be seven. So, I'm going to go out and buy some laser measuring tools, and when we do occupancy inspections going forward, we'll do those calculations, and then on the certificate, you see there'll be an occupant load there. Now, we're not going to... load there. Now, we're not going to, um, you know, react to that unless someone calls with a complaint. Does that make sense? We're not going to be...
Occupancy police.
Occupant police.
Another police joke.
Another police joke.
Oh, chief! Are you, are we painting a pig again?
This is just lipstick.
Just lipstick.
Makeup.
In addition, uh, we talked a lot about, um, rental properties, the upkeep on those, uh, the expectations for particular, uh, structures that we have quite a few around that are derelict. And, um, together with the mayor and Martin, decided that we need to reestablish what's already in ordinance, and that is the Rental Advisory Housing Commission. So I think, you know, with, uh, some volunteers that I think we have lined up, we will have that for you at the next meeting.
Yes, we will. We will reconvene and commission those calls.
I'd like to comment that the landlords that were there, you know, they, they can rent to, set whatever limit they want to on how many people can live, live in a structure. But our establishing the standard will help them, uh, in their relationships with their tenants and say, you know, I, I have to do this. Uh, and they were kind of enthusiastic about us taking on this stuff.
The only, um, just in case you're wondering, the only thing written, written into state statute has to do with rental property, and that is that there's a minimum, um, or there's an expectancy of two per bedroom. But the, the Property Maintenance, uh, Code actually gives size specifications. Anything under a hundred square feet would be one, hundred to a hundred and fifty and so on and so forth. And that's what we'll use to calculate that.
That's only for rental properties, that's not for...
No, that's for any residence.
If you, if you own, you're still subject to the same...
You would still be given, if you bought a house and, uh, we came out and inspected it, we would have that line filled out on there.
I think it's an excellent thing.
No, no more kids, Joe.
Absolutely. About particular property neighbor.
It doesn't happen often, but when it does, at least you've got something to say.
We do.
Look, this is how it's supposed to be.
We had a discussion that night too about the occupants, but we've decided it was not wise to get into that because the definition of family is a very convoluted definition. So what we were going with this was a specific number.
Yeah.
So that came out of, uh, that, uh, discussion along with the reestablishment of the Rental Advisory Housing Commission. Um, it's a lot of good information. So hopefully, uh, we'll have, uh, the commission, uh, coming out of the next meeting, and then we'll have some, uh, ordinance suggestions probably in late April or May. Uh, yes, sir.
Do you do, uh, like, uh, Housing Authority and the Windcrest and, uh, anytime there's a change of occupancy on those?
Those two, absolutely. They're good about calling.
And anybody got others? We got the one out on Progress Parkway that owns apartments.
They call. Yep. There are some that don't, and they're on my list. I mean, I reach out. Um, we have a file of rental properties, seven hundred and ninety-one listed. Some of them are commercial, so that's not an exact number, and it fluctuates. Um, we got about a hundred and thirty that haven't been updated, so about fifteen percent. Um, of those hundred and thirty, there's about seven or eight landlords that own those properties, and I'm calling them. I've sent a couple letters. Now I'm gonna call and say, hey, because now, Martin mentioned earlier that we're working with citizens, but they want that file so that they can tell us when those properties change electric, so it needs to be accurate.
Some of those will be properties we've never inspected?
Possibly.
Yeah, probably so.
Dave, when you're inspecting these, uh, for occupancy and stuff like that, how detailed do you get, I mean, as far as egress and...
No, it's just really, I mean, I say life, health and safety, so egress would be part of it. But what we're looking at in occupancy inspection is GFI, smoke detectors, carbon oxide, water heater, furnace, gas appliances, um, numbers on the outside.
Electrical.
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 Service boxes.
So if they have a bedroom in the basement and there's no egress window, that's approved?
Nope.
No.
Nope, it's not a bedroom then.
No, I mean, I'm not measuring egress. It's kind of what I thought you were alluding to.
Right.
But no. No, that would not be approved.
But, you know, once you give occupancy...
Yeah, what happened?
All we're looking at is what's there the day that we're there. That's all we can look at.
Right. Yeah.
Any other questions on that?
Nope.
Uh, there's a little bit more information there, planning and zoning, board of adjustment. We did have a planning and zoning meeting, but it was a short, seven-minute meeting.
Whoa, whoa, Joe's gonna tell us all about that.
I wasn't there. He wasn't there.
We have another, uh, we plan to have another VRBO in town with your approval on the twenty-eighth, so that was what that meeting was about. Down on Flood Plain, it's, it's already been covered at nauseam, but I wanted to point out the National Weather Service Spring Flood Outlook has a ninety-five percent chance of a moderate flooding and a sixty-eight percent chance of major flooding.
And this is the, the Mississippi, in our case, the Mississippi River?
Moderate flooding being thirty-five foot, major flooding being forty foot.
And we're good to fifty-three feet, right?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two feet?
Fifty-two feet, yes. You don't wanna ever get that high, no? If it gets that high, it'll be...
It almost did. Two years ago.
Mm-hmm.
I was here.
Yes.
Anything else, David?
No, sir.
Anybody else have anything? Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay.
Takes us to committee reports. Joe, do you have anything from planning and zoning?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, any public comments? We need to pass out this, uh, from our closed session, and we'll...
Story of your life.
Motion to approve? Okay. Have a second? Call in favor?
Aye.
Please pass the paperwork back. Thank you. Takes us to old business. Takes us to the second reading of Bill Number Forty-two sixty-nine. An ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of St. Genevieve and the St. Genevieve Municipal Ban. Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a roll call, please.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Paul, I'm gonna abstain again.
Can you state your reason?
Uh, because I'm a member of, yeah, I conduct the ban.
Thank you. Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rozika?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one abst...
Abstention.
Um, Bill Number Forty-two sixty-nine now becomes ordinance forty-two hundred.
Thank you. Takes us to Bill Number Forty-two seventy. An ordinance approving a bid proposal from Wireless USA, Arlington, Missouri, for the purchase and installation of a Firecom radio intercom system for the new ladder truck in an amount not to exceed six thousand and thirty-eight dollars and thirty cents.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Rozika?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yeah.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill Number Forty-two seventy now becomes ordinance forty-two oh one.
Thank you very much. This is our table, uh, one we tabled, uh, two weeks ago, and it's back for the first reading. I know there was some questions for Kenny. Wasn't here to answer them.
I had to take it back off, right? How, how do I take it?
That's good, that's a good point.
Did you just make a motion to bring it off the table?
Well, you tabled it until this meeting.
Yes.
Yes, so then...
So we don't have to?
No.
Okay.
Gotcha.
All right, well, uh, I'll tell you what. Do you wanna answer the, you want me to read it first, or you wanna ask questions, or how you guys wanna do this?
Just read it, and then we can ask.
Read it, and then we'll ask questions.
Okay. Bill Number Forty-two...
The motion is a second, then you can discuss.
I'm sorry. Yeah, okay. Bill Number Forty-two seventy-one, an ordinance approving a bid proposal from Richard Stoll, St. Genevieve, Missouri, for the purchase of a twenty-ten Chevrolet Suburban in an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand dollars, and amending the Rural Fire Fund Number Sixty. Move approval. Second. Now, should I just go? Very discussion?
Well, if I may, I've heard that there were some questions, so I provided a summary of the system, what we came up with. Uh, how this came about, a couple months ago, an Alderman contacted me and suggested I look at an SUV on a local lot. He thought it'd be a benefit to our department. My staff and I looked at it and drove it and determined it was actually too small of a vehicle for ours. It wasn't gonna be comparable for long trips and things. Uh, they were told that we weren't gonna be actively searching for one, but if they came across something like this, to let me know, where we could see if we could proceed with it. Uh, in early February, one was brought to our attention. Mr. Stoll was kind enough to show it to us, and it's an immaculate conception. It's a low mileage SUV used. And we talked to him, and I talked to Martin about what we had to do to go through it. So we followed proper procedure, put it in the paper, asked for bids for two weeks, and then got one bid back, and it was his. Uh, benefits to the department, this will give us another four-wheel drive for wintertime months. Uh, gives us more people carrying capacity. Right now, with the current car we're using, we can get four. If we take any more than that, like we do at winter fire school, we take six. It requires a second vehicle, which means we have to take somebody else's vehicle, and we pay mileage to that person to do it. So we're paying...
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What will happen to that vehicle? Will that, the vehicle we have, you plan on keeping that vehicle or turning that one into surplus?
That can be turned back in once we get the other one outfitted.
Okay, so that'll go back into surplus and that'll go for sale, or, so we're, the insurance, we're just gonna be insuring one vehicle, not two vehicles then?
Yeah, we, we have to do two of them until I get it converted over.
Right, I understand that, but that's, that's the plan then. So there were some question about that, so I wanted to make sure that was clear.
And the reason we did the, the Crown Vic is because we weren't actually looking for one.
Right.
So this was a, a stopgap until we either found something or whatever.
Right. That's, that's, that's good, that's, oh, don't rush it, I hear.
Yes.
Wouldn't it just be cheaper to rent a, a vehicle when you go to class?
Well, we go to, just not only classes, but we do monthly meetings out in the region. And we made several trips. In the last year, that vehicle's made a trip to Nebraska, to Indianapolis, Columbia, numerous trips to Jefferson City, and several trips to St. Louis for different things. So we're using it probably once or twice a week on trips or local type things. I use it around town whenever I'm running errands, picking things up in the fire department too.
And would this vehicle have any utility for making, uh, calls?
Yeah, well, we would eventually get the lights and siren mounted into it. One of the other benefits that I didn't get to yet was, uh, the fact that it can pull a trailer. Right now, if we go out on a technical rescue, it requires our enclosed trailer, which our three-quarter ton pickup can pull. But it also would require the ATV to go with it in case we have to haul things in or haul people out. And we have nothing there right now that can pull that because of, everything we have small is overweight already. So what we'd have to do is commandeer somebody's personal vehicle. And if we do that, then it becomes a city-owned vehicle, and we're liable for damages and things like that to their personal vehicle. So this would eliminate having to commandeer somebody's personal vehicle for a response.
So you mentioned this is a four-wheel drive?
Yes.
So that we've also added that capability in the event of weather or...
Yeah.
Terrain or whatever, so...
When we had talked about the other vehicle that was too small, um, you had made a mention that, uh, you would be, uh, you would be able to find through Conservation Department or other various entities, a suitable vehicle that'll fit your needs better than the Explorer we're looking at.
I have applied for it. I've been on the, the wish list for probably four or five years now. And the only thing I've been called down there far was a, uh, utility van with two seats, and it had a hundred and something thousand miles on it. Came from an Air Force Base, and it was really money worth to drive to London and to look at it.
And then the only other thing that was brought up to me was, uh, possible buying one of the sheriff's departments when they turn them in because they've been replacing them rather frequently.
Uh, it's my understanding that those go to auction, and they also, I don't think have any four-wheel drives unless the, the newer little Explorers do. The Tacos that they have are all two-wheel drives.
I know those vehicles, although the sheriff's department vehicles do go to auction. I know that personally.
Well, they don't have to.
Well, they don't have to, but they, they take them there, and that clears, that cleans, cleans a slate for them, you know, so.
I was just hoping one of them would be, but the Explorers they have are too small anyway.
Yeah.
And the thing we're looking at here too, folks, is we're asking for seventeen thousand for a used one. We're not asking for seventy for a brand-new one. And we think a used one will suit our needs for several years to come.
And this money, this money that's coming, this twelve thousand's coming out of the Rural Fire Fund? And so that's designated money for something like that?
For, yeah, and the traditional use for that has been for support vehicles, which is considered a support vehicle, or major, uh, repairs, unexpected repairs like the motor in our van that time, or matching grant monies and things like that.
Do we know what the book value of this said vehicle is?
Yeah, uh, I did research on that, and the NADA, I can find my papers here. NADA on it was like twenty-two thousand, pull it up here, gotta put my glasses on. Uh, clean retail for a vehicle of that age with seventy-five thousand miles is twenty-two thousand nine twenty-five, according to NADA. And I also did Kelley Blue Book for a private sale. And private sale ranges anywhere from eighteen, eight ninety-two to twenty-two four oh seven, or twenty thousand six forty-seven is the median. And I also did, uh, some checks, and I found ten of them in the region that were similar to what we're talking about. And the best deal that I could find on that was a two thousand and ten with ninety-six thousand miles, and they want sixteen thousand one hundred and one, one hundred and eleven dollars, which is nine hundred dollars less than what we're doing, but has twenty thousand more miles on it than what they're asking for. And I've, I've personally seen this vehicle, and it's immaculate. He keeps everything great. We know the history of the truck. He's had it almost its entire life, so.
So he's got twelve thousand in his budget for this?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we're trying to figure out where the other five, I mean, that five...
Actually, part of that twelve thousand was included in the Firecom system. This was an unexpected thing that we did not budget for because we weren't actively looking for.
I mean, my only other question, chief, is when we were talking about your vehicles a while back, um, does this, how do I say it? Is this, is this more important than replacing the truck that you were wanting to replace because it had a manual transmission and nobody knew how to drive it?
No, the guys, the guys know.
The concern you had, or, not nobody knew how to drive it, but it, it's difficult to get in a spot using a vehicle like that.
It, we have some of the younger guys that we have to keep continually teaching how to drive a stick. Most of the older guys that actually do the truck driving are pretty familiar with sticks.
And that goes to five, right?
So they need to come up with twelve thousand?
I would think so. That, that truck is in sound condition. The truck we're talking about, I think, last time I looked, only has like eight or nine thousand miles on it. So mechanically, it's sound, and the biggest issue is just some people don't know how to drive a stick, and we keep them out of that one, put them in one that has an automatic.
So, so we need to come up with twelve thousand dollars then? Cause you got about five in that fund, you said?
Correct. If, if we go that route, yes. Cause I figured on six thousand of that, that was budgeted for the Firecom system as maintenance.
So where do we come up with twelve thousand dollars? I mean, I'm sure it would be lovely to have.
Well, you still have that.
That would come out of the Rural Fire Fund. The Rural Fire Fund, I, last time I looked, has sixty or seventy thousand dollars in it available, plus ACD on top of it.
The ordinance includes a budget amendment, and to confirm that that amounts in there to trend, to trend through.
So, so the, we have the money in accounts that exist?
We have money in his budget.
In his account.
And drawing from the Rural Fire Fund.
To make this purchase.
And that's just a budget amendment.
Okay.
To combine them.
So it's not, it's not asking us to come up with twelve thousand dollars from somewhere else?
Nothing's coming out of our budget funds.
Good question. Thank you. Okay.
We do the budget amendment with it, to keep it clean so you guys can see.
Is there any other questions?
That sounds good to me.
Mine have been answered.
Everybody's question's been answered. I have a motion, a first and a second. Uh, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, I'm sorry.
This is still the first, this is still the first reading?
It's the first reading, yes.
So is all in favor?
Yes.
They already made that motion?
Made the motion. An ordinance approving a bid proposal for Richard Stole, St. Genevieve, Missouri, for the purchase of a twenty-ten Chevrolet Suburban in an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand and amending the Rural Fire Fund Number Sixty.
Buck, you made a good point. You made a good point. So we had, we had a motion.
We have to vote to do second reading.
They have a motion in a second.